Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor? The ayes have it. Regular agenda. Old business. Proposed biopharmaceutical facility. ID number 20009.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Joe Casali, registered professional engineer. Office is at 300 Post Road in Warwick. With me is Jason Tilly. Jason is Vice President of Acquisitions for Davis Companies LLC, who now own the parcel. You may remember, Mr. Chairman, we had received our master plan approval for Rubius Therapeutics back in December of 2020. We've received a couple of extensions now, but they will expire on or about January 12, 2025. We are asking the board if you would give us one more year extension. We are trying to find customers and clients for both the subject parcel that we have the master plan on and the existing. And it's obviously would be a lot easier and a lot more advantageous if we had a master plan approval. We can get someone on this and quickly through the system.
Any questions of the board members? Any discussion? We have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor? The ayes have it. Amelia's Way, 260 Old County Road, ID 2405.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are still working on peer review, and we're going to ask for a further extension until January. Of course, we will waive any deadline in which you have to make a decision.
Any questions of the board members?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the date is? So January? January 16, 2025?
Sixteen.
January 16?
Yes.
2025, this will be considered public notice? All? He indicated that waiving any until the 16th.
We should have a date for your decision. One, that night? Trying to get the date for the decision.
If you do it that night, it would be good, I think, if you had a totally, but you didn't want your engineering feedback.
Is there a problem pushing the decision to the following? So that we could digest, because this is?
End of the following February 20th.
Okay.
And that would be decision on February 20th, 2025.
So I need to amend my motion.
You amend the motion?
Motion to?
I think you already approved, so just make a second motion now? Simply just say that the deadline decides to be February 25.
Okay. Motion to amend. Make a second. My motion concerning moving, moving this to February 20th, 2025? For a decision.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor? The ayes have it. Turning to new business. 111 Tarklin Road, ID 2409.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is pre-op, it's informal, but for the record. My name is Tim Kane, I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Rhode Island. I have an office at 627 Putnam Pike. This is a proposed two lot minus subdivision, and I represent Laura Failed Swallow and Jeff Swallow, they're the owners of the property. So this property is out in the hinterlands, it's right out near the Norman Davis landfill. Yeah, Billy Davis country way up on Tarklin Road. It is in our in our 200 zone. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a five acre zone. It's a very little portion of Smithfield, that's own five acres. And particularly this portion, my understanding, and I think Mike Phillips could back it up or provide further clarification, is that this property was zoned five acre because there were concerns back in the day over the Davis landfill, and there would be contamination up there, and they didn't want a lot of building going up there. So they rezoned this R200. Fortunately for my client, the contamination and the water from the Davis landfill runs towards Burlingame, Game Road, and Log Road. And that's why you see a special water line on Log Road going all the way up to, and I think further than the Smithfield line into North Smithfield. So I would respectfully suggest to you that that's why this property was zoned, it's such a, you know, large sized lot. And fortunately for my client, the waters clean up there. It's not a problem, but it was a problem on the other side where the water flowed. So they would like to make full use of the property. It was done, this lot was subdivided in 1992. But unfortunately, the plan never got recorded, and the folks that sold my client's lot had to put the house on it and they sold it. And I couldn't find this thing, I was really looking for it, it wasn't recorded, and I couldn't find the zoning issue. So I know you don't want to get stuff dumped out in the neighborhood here, but it's quite simple.
That's no problem.
Back in 1992, it's called a divisional hand. And the former owners did go to zoning and they got a lot relief, relief on the lot size, which if we see fit to go forward, we'll be asking relief on the lot size from you, because you're the unified board now. So it was a two lot subdivision, really the difference between what you're looking at, what you're seeing is the proposed subdivision. Now we have a hop sign on the lot, just doesn't the, check out what we, we, the lot line, it's kind of in those. And then the plan we're showing you, it goes out this way, and then the plan you had before you would go the other way. That's really the difference. So it's quite a large parcel of real estate, it's 5.27 acres. The resulting lots would be 3.14 acres and 2.135 acres, 2.135. So they're still both good sized lots. My clients do have a child graduating from Rhode Island college this year. He hopes to stay in the area, we can't guarantee anything, but the thought process is, I'm sorry, from URI, okay? And he'd like to go to the MBA program at Bryant and stay in the area. And we can't guarantee it, but this would possibly be a housing opportunity for their son. If they can split up the lot, I can also tell you that the lot will not be out of character with the, with the lots in the general area. And I'll just give you, I guess I'll call it an existing conditions map, give you a feel. So I checked off the area of the subject lot. And you can see the two lots, I don't have a direction on it, so I guess to the, probably the south. The median south are both two acre lots, a little over two. And so this lot would be consistent with the two lots that immediately abut it. Of course, behind that you have the horse farm, and then you have the Davis landfill, and then you have wetlands across the street, which are totally undevelopable. And then when you get down to Tarklin, down the street a little bit, it's, the proposed lots are substantially the same size as as many lots in the neighborhood. So I don't think the lots will stick out like a sore thumb, I think they're, you know, generally the proposed lots are consistent with the lots in this, in this kind of rural area, town suburban slash area of town. So we wanted to come in and show it to you and kind of take your temperature before we move forward. I apologize for that. And hopefully answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Kane, the prior subdivision plan that you provided to us, what happened with that?
It lapsed, they never, they never.
So it was actually approved?
It was approved, but they never recorded it, they went to the zoning board and got relief too. And if we move forward, we ask you for that relief, because you're the unified board.
And you're looking for a similar relief?
Yeah, and when it was, and when it was sold to him, and we, she can, my client can testify at the next hearing and answer the question. It was definitely presented to them that you can, you can subdivide the lot, we did it, okay, but, you know, I don't know why they never recorded the plan, maybe they didn't want to pay taxes on a lot for 20 years, maybe there was a financial issue. But I got those records directly from the planning department today.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, it also appears that they go to the planning board and approves. I said, where the reason is never often recorded.
Any questions?
So again, we wanted to run it by you before we do a full engineering design and come back.
Well, the fact that it had been previously approved, obviously gives, is helpful. The fact that it appears that although the zoning relief is requested, the abutting properties in close proximity are similar in nature.
Nice three acre lot and a two plus acre lot, nice lots, you know, rural suburban type lots and a housing opportunity, not an affordable housing opportunity, but a housing opportunity in Smithfield that won't change the character of the area, I guess is the best way to put it.
Is the area serviced, or, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Go ahead.
Is the area serviced by?
No.
Sewer?
It's, it's way out there. Sewer stops several miles before you get to this. You can throw a stone to Gloucester, basically, it's, it's.
Lot of room for basketball courts.
We'll see you in a couple, another month or two when we can come back with a fully set.
Thank you. 245 Reservoir Road, ID 2411.
This one.
What we're doing now?
Five lots.
They want to put five lots, they're supposed to have, sorry, 200, five, five acres, right? But they want to fit five lots and have like 200.
We could, two, go three. Right? No matter how much density you want to tolerate.
It what? Looks like it's responding to a lot.
When it's on, I can see right here it's text.
What about this side?
It shouldn't be USB at this place. It says USB at this place.
So research we have.
Yeah. That's why they tell us not to mess with it.
How much? How much buffer do we have between each? That's a good question. Let's find out.
Hope my computer didn't even register that.
Looks like dirty feet. Dirty, 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 my feet. That's not a lot, each side. It's not house to house, it's lot line, lot line to lot line either side. We're talking from here to here, 60 and 60, or maybe 30 and 30, so.
From the end ball?
Yeah, from 60 feet from the lot line. Dirty damage.
Yeah. Look at that, huh? You imagine? Just wait long enough, something happens. Ah. Why should you move that one up? Then after six days. You can't, it's like a rule in baseball, you can't. It's good for business. Yes, that's right. Yes. Okay, whenever you're ready, Mr. Swallow.
Chairman, again, just for the record, my name is Joe Casali, I'm a registered professional engineer. Office is at 300 Post Road in Warwick. With me is, who wouldn't own this, it's the owner of the subject parcel. As you know, tonight is a pre-application for a minor subdivision. What, just quickly, what would be allowed here by rights would be as low as two parcels, if it was conventional, as upwards of 42 parcels, if it was comprehensive. What we're asking for is specifically frontage relief and lot area relief for five road front lots. But if I may, just show a quick, oh, presentation. You all may not know where we are, this is a unique corner of town. You can see Smithfield, North Smithfield, Lincoln Line, further bifurcated by 295 and 146. And when you have Route 116 toward Washington Highway, and that's Reservoir Road, I'm sure you all know the, it's quite a rural piece. And the subject parcel, it says this by 48, lot 30, entirely in the R200 district, and it's about just shy of 14 acres. But for just some context, the applicant, Mr. Ondis does own Lot 16 in the town of Lincoln. We're going to incorporate that into this development, as you'll see, and also lay on that big piece, Lot 18, also in the town of Lincoln. So again, when we look at the piece, you have the reservoir, socket reservoir number three to the north, that is the 200 foot jurisdictional buffer. So there are not only no wetlands on this site, we won't even need to apply to DEM's division of freshwater wetlands. And so our proposal, excuse me, recently too, the lot was at one time in our ID. The latest changes, this lot, as others in this area have been upgraded to the R200 standard. So that's the math, if we take the lot areas and break it down, we're just shy of three lots, we end up two conventionally. When you add, the company has a permit of 40, that's where you get the 42 units. But our proposal is, just as you see, will just be five road front lots. And they'll all have frontage and access on Reservoir Road, and they'll all back up predominantly to 295. You can see the building envelope is quite large. And further, what we'd like to do, and we want to deed that portion of Lot 18 in Lincoln to our sub lot two, and we want to also deed the rest of the portion to, from Lot 16 to our sub lot one. So in essence, you'd have larger lots, they won't meet the R200 standard. None of them will be 200,000 square feet, which is close, as you know, to eight acres. But they will be close in terms of 163,000 square feet for some of them, and as low, that is 100,000 square feet. Now, in terms of frontage, only two lots, sub lot one and sub lot two would have the requisite frontage, as you know, Mr. Chairman, in an R200, 300, usually a feed of frontage. And so what we would be asking for would be that relief. All of these would be, would need wells and sepphics in this area of town. Soil evaluations, preliminarily, we have water tables at about 2, 3 feet. So that would allow us for individual sewage disposal systems, or OWTSs as they're now called. In terms of relief, as we stated, we would ask for our area in all five of the sub lots, and we would ask for frontage for lots three, four, and five. And this may be one of the simpler permitting requirements. You're familiar with our presentations at this point. Really, tonight is just pre-application, next step for us would be back before you for preliminary plan, and then ultimately the final plan. The sepphics would be individually permitted, the DEM after the lots are created. The wells would be part of that package, there's no freshwater wetlands, there's no state highway, no physical alteration permit. And so the purpose of the meeting tonight is to just solicit your feedback on if you think you could support something like this, which is pretty unique. It's, it's pretty unique, when you look at the face of it, that we come here and we ask for relief on, on each one of the lots for area, it's equally as unique, is they're all road front lots, and with the combination of the, of the Lincoln parcel, Lot 16, making them a little bit larger. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ondis and I would be happy to answer questions of you and members of the board.
Questions? Yeah. Charlie?
How do we come up with five and not four to save the 200,000?
We still wouldn't make the 200,000, we would only get two lots, conforming lots. Two or three? 2.95, you gotta round it down, so we would only get.
Why can't we compromise, if that's so, it's why can't we compromise like four? Like, see how you got that, you know, it looks a little looks a little old. Looks a little old.
Is, is one lot only 73,000 square feet as well?
Um...
Using five?
Uh, one lot is, uh, the smallest lot, is Lot Five, is 100,000, um, square feet, uh, let me see if I can just...
What was that chart you had earlier?
Seventy-three plus...
Right, so Sublot One would have, thank you, David, 73,000 square feet in, um...
Gotcha.
But overall, uh, so the smallest lot is Sublot Five, uh, 2.3 acres, 2.296, pre-sizable lots, um, there. If it wasn't R80 zone, we wouldn't be having this conversation in terms of frontage or lot area, uh, but because of the change to the R200, uh, hence the, the, the need to at least ask for, for it. I think it lays out, um, very nicely, um, in terms of the building envelope, those are sizable houses, and, uh, the wells and the septic will all be kept on individual lots, but ultimately, it's up to the board, which is, um, which is why I'm glad we're here for a pre-app.
What was the argument to change it first, was to go higher?
From 80 to, don't know, Mr. Phillips?
Uh, this was a known change that was brought about, uh, through the comprehensive plan, in, you know, protecting, uh, water share around the social reservoir.
That's my thought, yeah, that's my thought. So, why would we change that thought?
I mean, looking at, uh, you know, the density of them, uh, obviously, the soils, uh, are gonna have to bear out that they can support, uh, or if you ask for additional testing of the soils, I mean, it looks like it can support it. I mean, lighting the, the land in Lincoln, uh, I think is a, the key restricted with that, so that it's actually part of those two lots, it brings them up, you know, very close to 200,000. So, you know, I, I, I think it's, it is, it would be consistent with other development in the area, almost like the other one we heard, there are lots that are smaller. I'm, obviously, this is an R80 zone, it's a little...
So, a little different going from one to two, and then to five, like, it, it, similar issues but very different issues, uh, um...
Well, my point is the matter of...
200,000 is not five acres, it's...
Uh, yeah.
But it's in the plan, that it can be that, so we'd have to...
Four plus acres.
What's that for?
Forty thousand, so, so, five, five plus acres.
You know, the change would only be, you'd only want to change just for economics.
Yeah, but you're getting, um...
You don't have to develop, you're not putting sewer water in there, you don't, you don't have a financial problem with the extra lot.
No, and that's, but in the uniqueness of this is, where would you ever, when's the last time we saw a road front subdivision? That's, that's the key, can you get more density here? Absolutely, you can put a road in and get more density. Um, that's why I think this is a, a reasonable compromise.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out why, you know...
Why? Because of, there are other options, um, this is our option that we prefer, but there are, there are other options that you could create frontage on Reservoir Road, uh, and you could put in cul-de-sacs and so forth and so on, and, and get further density. You could have, um, comprehensive permits for further density. I, I think this is a nice compromise for road front lots, and you get five lots, uh, quickly in town.
It, it seems like, it seems like this board gets stripped every five minutes with comprehensive.
Well, you have to know what, what's, what's allowed by right, Charlie.
I know that, I know that.
That, that, that's...
I feel like there's a gun in my head every time I have a conversation about the comprehensive.
That's right.
It goes over my head and says, "Well, if you don't give us this, we're gonna give you, we've got 315 houses."
And that's why I think this is a nice compromise, you've got fif- 14 acres for five lots, uh, that three years ago would have been allowed by right, uh, a couple feet north in Massachusetts, this is Form A lots, allowed by right, um, we're not threatening anybody, uh, we're just simply stating the facts. Uh, conventionally, there's two, uh, as much as 42 for comprehensive, um, I think five road front is reasonable, but we need, uh, we need variances.
That's not, you know, to draw, I said, I like to play the cards, but to draw up the comprehensive plan, so you put the, spend the extra money, put the roads and stuff, you're not gonna, you're not gonna make any more doing that, you know?
I, I, I think you, you, I think there's, you can make more money on this parcel with 42 structures than five, um, road front lots.
If we allow this, then that property's gonna be, it's, that whole comprehensive plan, that area's gonna change. Because if you allow it for this, the next person's gonna come in and say, "Well, you did it for Joe."
So, when you're looking back, does it look like five lots in that area will change that section of town? That's on that Smithfield, North Smithfield, Lincoln line with those large parcels with 295, uh, it seems like there's nothing in that neighborhood, nothing exists south of Reservoir, north of, of 295, um...
But is there a conflict with the comprehensive plan, given the change that was made from R80 to R200, in...
We're not asking for any change in the comp...
No, no, I'm just saying, there was a reason why it went from R80 to R200.
Oh, I don't know the basis of that, um...
Yeah, well, it was just basically for water check, actually.
I, I understand, but it was done for a reason, right? Uh, or it, the fact that the change was done is significant, and we gotta be mindful of that.
That's all, right.
I think five lots is being a little aggressive.
Okay.
That if, if you're looking for our comment, that's the comment.
I am, I'm looking for honesty, that's, that's all I can ask for tonight.
Thank you, that's all I'm saying, I'm just trying to, trying to look out for the...
Just in my, that's in my opinion, but not to say something close would not be reasonable, yes. Any other questions?
Yes, um, the 200 foot goes right there. Yeah, but we, uh, we would be able to put that house in, that driveway in, and not even impede on the, um, jurisdictional area. So, it, it's not the, um, so we believe we don't need a wetlands permit for this, because we'll be out of all the buffers, um, and normally, five or more lots, you need a subdivision, suitability, determination, but the one, uh, fallout, uh, i- i- is that because they're road front lots, they're not necess, it's not necessary. So, uh, as odd as it may be, other than five septic systems from DEM, um, something like this, uh, wouldn't need, uh, anything else.
Any other questions of the board members, comments? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The Collection at Lime Rock Acres, ID 2410. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Michael Resnick. On behalf of the applicant, Bowport LLC, uh, joined here, uh, this evening by the principals of Bowport, EJ Lanny and, uh, Mr. Lucel Cagnan. I give a brief, uh, recitation of, of, of the development, uh, share with you the project team we have. This is a comprehensive permit, 6082 Lime Rock Road, Lot Four, lots 43 and 45. It's in an R80 zone. Again, this is a comprehensive permit, uh, project, and what's been placed before you is a 50% LMI, uh, project, a total of 218 units, and it's known as the Collection at Lime Rock. One thing that I'd like to outline for the board, as you may know, the law has changed as it relates to the procedure for a comprehensive permit. There is no longer a master plan, it goes from pre-app to a preliminary to a final. For that reason, at this pre-app, what you have before you is very similar to a master plan application. And the reason for that is, this is going to be our only opportunity before this board to elicit feedback, before we go back with our team and solidify a crystallized project that we would present, uh, at, at preliminary. Uh, and so for that reason, there are a lot of materials that you have that are above and beyond what you would normally see, uh, for a pre-app. I'm joined this evening by project engineers, uh, Joe Casali, Bill Lavery, there are civil engineers. I'm joined by John Chevlin from PAR, who's our traffic engineer. Uh, you have a report, uh, unfortunately, it's not available this evening, our wetland biologist and flagger, McQ Environmental. In addition, you have in your packet, uh, a fiscal impact study, AICP, Joe Lombardo, uh, who will be an expert and who will be presenting at preliminary, uh, was unfortunately not, uh, able to attend this evening. We also have Doug McLean, who's the director of, of planning and commentary, he is our land use expert and planner, and he's provided you, uh, with a land use report. And, and finally, somewhat hand in hand with the fiscal impact study, uh, from Mr. Lombardo, we have provided a letter, uh, from a, a realtor broker, uh, Mr. Riley White from Keller Williams, uh, who is here this evening and can take some questions, uh, basically relative to the market, uh, in this area. Other comment that I wanted to share with you is, we did have a TRC meeting, uh, on, uh, December 3rd of this year. We received feedback from your town planner, your town engineer, your public works director, your fire department, uh, and your zoning department, and all of those comments are under review and being considered by, by our team. Uh, again, uh, this is, what's being proposed is a, uh, 218-unit development. Uh, what I would like to note, uh, for the board, as I understand that that is a significant number of units, is under a comprehensive, uh, permit project for this property, uh, we would be able to obtain, uh, 13 by right plus a nine-unit bonus per acre, which would actually bring the units to 239. So, although we could present within the state minimums a project for 239, uh, we've instead presented you, uh, with a project for 218 units. Uh, and the reason for that, and I'm sure that Mr. Casali and his team will get into it further, uh, is it's supportable. Water, sewer, gas, all the preliminary due diligence that we've done demonstrates, uh, that this type of density, uh, could be supported. And candidly, the town is under its 10%, uh, LMI limit, and in a little over 25% LMI development, this type of 50% LMI development is gonna substantially help the town towards, um, towards that goal. Very briefly, just so you know what you have, you have a pre-app application, you have plans and maps from Mr. Casali's office, you have a pre-application narrative, you have a land use planning report, a traffic impact, uh, analysis by Mr. Chevlin, uh, you have a property summary memo, we acknowledge, uh, that this property is within an FAA hazard map, so that map, that information has been provided. Uh, we've also provided hydrant flow test maps and information, uh, served letters from, letter, uh, letters from RI Energy, uh, and a fiscal impact study, as well as the broker we- letter. Uh, I would also add that we have been in discussions with Rhode Island Housing. Uh, we are imminently going to be filing for a, a letter of eligibility, but we wanted to give this board the opportunity to chime in before we made any formal submission to Rhode Island Housing, and we have obtained a monitoring agent, uh, Ms. Melinda, uh, Lodge. Uh, and with that, unless there's any questions for me, I'd like to turn, uh, uh, the presentation over to Mr. Casali to give you an overview of the development.
Charlie?
Excuse me, I have a question for you, Mr. ...
Of course.
You mentioned that in the TRC, I didn't hear you mention it...
I hear you mentioned what I had brought up, you, for the planning board, but did you get my, did you get the, what I brought up at the TRC meeting from the planning board member?
I, I got a sta, I got a staff memo, that's the only thing that I, I've seen from, from the town.
You didn't mention that, that's what I'm saying, I was wondering why that got skipped, because it was quite a conversation about a compromise on a sidewalk.
So, let me say this, as you know, Scott Levesque, you know Scott was, was here, no intent to go over any comments that you made, I took a quick read of the TRC report, and I'm just reporting to the board what, what departments provided us with commentary. Uh, I'm certainly, uh, happy to address anything that you brought up, I wasn't there, I didn't watch the whole video.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying your fault, I'm saying, I want to know who dropped the ball on what I had said, why it wasn't written down. Yeah, but it should show in the TRC report that I suggested that.
Yeah.
Well, then, why was I doing that? It's a little offensive, I mean...
I know you're, I know you're new to the TRC, but written, written, uh, comments typically get, get put in the TRC reports as well.
Well, how's he gonna know about what my suggestion was, how they gonna have, he has no idea...
We actually already incorporated it into it, Charlie.
Well, I understand, that's nice, thank you, but I'm just saying, the reason he didn't know about it, why, why, why wasn't it brought, why wasn't it written down?
Well, Mike said, if you don't write it down on the paper, it doesn't always get to the, to the memo, but we, the design team knew, uh, well aware of it, and we're gonna address it tonight, that the sidewalks throughout the subdivision.
Well, don't thank you, but I just wanted to know why the other, why it wasn't...
Because you didn't write it down, so it didn't make it to the written staff report.
I wasn't totally writing it down.
Well, we know you're new, but no, it's okay, but we got the memo, we got the memo.
I'm upset, I'm upset for the reason...
Don't be, because we got the memo, we're gonna address it tonight.
And, and just one thing before we go, one thing, I'm sorry...
But is, is that a TRC issue or, or a planning board issue?
It's a TRC issue.
So, it's an issue that needs to be resolved, not before us today, but before a plan, before the TRC. So, he's got valid comments that should be addressed, but in terms of moving forward with today?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm a little, no, I, I don't blame him.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, Joe, just one thing I'd like to add, uh, we are very intent on taking down any comments that happen tonight. I'm not the best note taker in the world, I have Madam Snografer here, we're gonna get every word, we're gonna spread it to our team, anybody, any points, they're gonna be addressed by us, absolutely.
Thank you.
That's why we're here tonight, to get some comments.
All right, Mr. Chairman, um, again, just for the record, uh, Joe Casali, registered professional engineer, 300 Oak Road in Warwick, um, this is a pre-application meeting, uh, Collection at Lime Rock Acres. Uh, this is a fact-finding mission to just facilitate the discussion, uh, between the team and the town. Um, as Attorney Resnick said, it's a 218-unit, uh, residential community, uh, because, uh, the density you'll see is because, uh, 50% of those units will be LMI, so 109 units will be LMI. But let me, uh, walk you through, um, again, 295, seven Lime Rock Road, um, that is the first piece, assesses flat 45, Lot 43, just shy of 14 acres, uh, contiguous piece, uh, assesses flat 45, Lot 43B, uh, another 24 acres, so together, um, just shy of about, uh, or just, uh, uh, north of 38 acres. Um, that is the, uh, airport hazard area, uh, that Attorney Resnick spoke of, uh, if you notice, uh, that Zone A, that's the runway protection zone, and a portion of our site, it's, um, does exist, uh, within that area, but you'll see, there will be no structures, uh, that will be proposed in that area. Uh, predominantly, most of the parcel exists in Zone B and C. B is, um, uh, you know, uh, what is, uh, we're concerned with in terms of the approach zone, uh, but that is, you will see, the Oaks at Harris is entirely in that Zone B, um, and I know some of you were involved back when we permitted the Oaks at Harris, um, and what we needed to do in terms of, of the FAA and the airport. So, let's look at the subject parcel, we've had the freshwater wetlands delineated, uh, the lower part of the site is encumbered with wetlands, there's a river, there's ponds, there's areas subject to storm flowage, um, and there's also freshwater wetlands. Uh, when you put the buffer zones on there, uh, the building setbacks and the jurisdictional area, um, it becomes, uh, convoluted, uh, very quickly. Um, there's also a, uh, Obadiah Smith Lot, uh, which is actually an old cemetery that exists on the parcel. Uh, we're having, we know that there's deeded access to it...
the parcel, we're having, we know that there's deeded access to it, we just can't pin down the meets and bounds, regardless, our project will stay far away from that, we will always provide access to the cemetery. So moving along, lot, house number 82, the existing single family dwelling is proposed to be raised, number 60 is proposed to stay under the First Church of God, and under either proposal, we would frame that house out. So looking at the zoning, you've got the R medium, the R 20M, the industrial zone, and then we're entirely in the R 80, residential 80,000 square foot zone. So as Attorney Resnick said, in terms of a conventional yield, mathematically, 15 lots, but as we lay it out and not ask for waivers and variances, we would need to put in a 1,600 foot town roadway, and that would still only yield us 13 lots, lot one being oversized, we have an agreement with the church to do so. But, and while houses will fit very conventionally in there, under the comprehensive permit application, you get the nine units per acre plus the baseline density, so as Attorney Resnick said, if you really follow the math, you can be upwards of 239 units, we're actually proposing about 21 shy of that at 218, half of them, or 109 of them, LMI. We're still going to, under this plan petition off parcel A for that number 60 Lime Rock Road, and staying within the building setback and the building envelope, private roadways, about 4,000 feet of them would be able to scribe in the 218 units. So they're going to be different configurations of these units. We have some that look like eight plexes, we have some that are sevens, we have sixes, there are also fives, there are quads, but all of them will have the same entry type level program. You know, that first floor is going to have your garage, your utility room, and a bedroom, that second floor is your kitchen, your living, your dining, and then finally upstairs, you're able to have that one bath, your washer, your dryer, and upwards of three more bedrooms upstairs, so some of these units will be able to house three and four bedroom units. That's a good look at what a quad would look like, there's a lot of character in those architectuals from the vertical siding, the, some of the trim and the dormers that you have there, and even some of the eyebrows that are over the entrance ways. This is a better look at a six of what it would look like, again, entrances and the garages in the front. In terms of, Charlie, this was the slide that we incorporated in, while I didn't have time to put it into the plan set, this is something you could expect, that we would have a segregated sidewalk, you would have a two foot grass strip, a four foot sidewalk on one side of the road, and that way people can walk through this development. In terms of water, there are no issues, there's a 12 inch Dr. Lyon water main right on Lime Rock Road, we would have a private water line within there for both domestic and fire protection. As Attorney Resnick said, we did a hydrant flow test, we got great results of 1,000 gallons a minute, and anywhere upwards of 75 and 76 PSI respectfully residual and static. Sewer is more of an issue, there's a, there are two ways to touch that sewer line that exists to the south, conventionally down Lime Rock Road, we may be able to pass through with different easements and shorten our run, and then service all of the individual units with gravity type sewer. One of the issues that we're having is the Whipple Road pump station, as you know, for years has been taxed, this is going to further tax this, so anything that we're going to propose, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, is gonna have to have some type of remedy, whether it's going to be most likely INI repairs, we know this is an old antiquated system, and every time it rains, all of the inflow from the surface water and all the infiltration from the groundwater overtaxes this pump station. We're not going to help that any, and so we would need to be part of the solution. And then ultimately, it makes its way through a large main down to the treatment facility. Drainage is a little bit more straightforward, everything moves left of the page or southerly, we've taken preliminary testing, have different groundwater tables, anywhere from two feet to three feet, and so predominantly, all of this water, as we've studied it all over the years, goes down through that Lime Rock Road culvert, that's the ultimate design point, and we'll be putting different drainage appurtenances on the downstream to capture and clean and attenuate all of that stormwater. Permitting requirements, again, tonight is pre-app, we're here for your honesty, for your feedback, we will need several state permits, including a wetlands permit, a DOT physical alteration, sewer authority, as well as the water supply board, ultimately fire, a whole bunch of permits from the town engineer, the stormwater, the traffic, soil erosion, landscape and lighting, preliminary, and then final, back here before you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if you'd like to ask questions now, or if you'd like to hear from Mr. Chevlin, who can give us an overview of some traffic.
I think it would be helpful that to the extent the board had questions of you regarding your presentation, given it's a little different then, we have different disciplines here, it'd be helpful.
I got, I got, I couldn't figure out the price of the houses, because it's gonna be 30, it's gonna be 30% to meet the comprehensive plan, how much are the 400 four bedroom houses gonna be in Smithfield?
So right now, we're working on the pro forma, the construction budget to submit to Rhode Island Housing. When we submit those materials and it's finished and we have our LOE, we can provide all of that information to the town. At this point, there's been no determinations and calculations made as to what the market rate would be, as opposed to the LMIs, and I can tell you, based on the area AMI, it's probably not going to be that different, but I don't want to talk in nonspecifics. So ultimately, Charlie, the state tells us what the price of the LMIs are going to be.
Okay, but for the comprehensive plan, I'm trying to figure this out, so forgive me if I'm off on this one, it's for the income of the average person in Smithfield.
Median, median.
So what is that, so that's gonna fit with that price of that house, and it's gonna be 30%. So you should have in your mind already that this works, and what is it, no matter what the state says.
I think it's gonna be pretty close to what we've just done in the adjacent facilities.
I'm just, I'm curious to how somebody is gonna afford these houses, because they're four bedroom houses in Smithfield, at 30%.
The AMI can be between 80 and 120%, it is likely that when we submit our application, we will be submitting it as a 120% AMI development, so it'll be 120% of the average median income, and that's within state law, those parameters.
And it's all gonna be affordable, we're putting the water through, and making four bedroom?
With owners, I've done them in Charleston on the waterfront, you can do them anywhere, and the percentage and how it's going to equate is different by every community, and we don't decide it, it is Rhode Island Housing that does it, so nobody's trying to hide the ball, we'll get you all the information, but we haven't gone through that exercise yet, and the reason why is this, normally in a master plan, we would be required to have that before we went to, in a pre-app, we do not, and the reason why we wanted to come to the board first is we wanted to get some feedback about some of these items before we finish our pro forma and construction budget. So, I mean, those are materials that you can have the answers to long before we come back for preliminary, which is not in a position to do it yet.
I'm just curious, like I said, I'm curious about how these things are gonna be affordable at the Smithfield Inc., what is the income of this, does anybody know what the income, the average income of this town is, and what 30% of that is, and that's what these houses are gonna have to be to fit into the comprehensive plan, to get the comprehensive plan, it has to fit with those criterias. There's no, there is no if so about that.
Around 86,000, the last housing we worked from, around 86,000, just for an example, we have condos that are being built now, I believe the affordability are in, I think there are two of the schedules, they're at 337,000, but I think they're selling, I think they just have to sell at 100% AMI, maybe a little bit more, there's a unit right down here that went for local fours.
So how much is that, forgive me, I don't, how much are people in Smithfield making? That sounds like we're making an awful lot of money in this town.
So if 86,000 is the median, and you're taking 120% of that, the formula is you can't spend more than 30% of that income on your housing.
Correct.
And based on local insurance rates and current interest rates, which is subject to change, that's when the state will tell the applicant in our letter of eligibility exactly what we can and cannot charge.
So what happens if we agree to all this, what happens if you can't, if you can't sell the houses, if you get them up there, and then you decide that it's not feasible to sell them for the income that's here, the reason why we gave you the comprehensive, and now you have to sell them at a higher price than the income of the people that are here, because, just because things went up, I mean, you have the right, but we also, we have the right to keep you at what you said you were gonna sell them for.
Absolutely.
So I would like to.
Because there's such a shortage in this state of affordable housing, you can't get the units up fast enough.
Well, I'm just saying.
Every politician is talking about affordable housing, from the speaker to the governor, the demand is there.
I totally understand.
I understand, but the market.
I'm trying to figure out the math, Joe, on the reason why we should be granted the comprehensive plan according to the.
Right, so you want the pro formas, which we don't have.
30% of the general income. You know, that's my, that's my question.
So you want the detailed pro formas, we do not have them yet.
So how do we grant you a comprehensive?
We're not here for a vote tonight, this is a pre-application meeting, we just want to hear comments.
That's my comment, I like to have that information before we go further, is what I'm trying to say.
But we just want your comments, that's all, there's no approvals tonight, yeah. And this kind of comes back to what I just said, is that the laws change, it used to be that we would be before you at a master, a preliminary, and a final, and preliminary is where all the hard engineering work is done, so I can't say, I'm not the one that wrote the law, and I question why it was changed this way, but the reality is, we don't have a conceptual plan, we don't get to come and ask you for feedback, et cetera. So we're here with an application, which candidly, is probably the most robust pre-application that you've ever received, we've got everybody that's an expert in this at least providing some upfront material, so we've given you as much as we can, and the moment that the construction budget, the pro forma is submitted and approved, it will certainly be shared. But just one other comment, if this is approved as a 50% LMI development, there's no going back because the market changes, that's it, this is, most municipalities will require a 99 year deed restriction, there's a monitoring agent in place, there's serious consequences if these were ever to be sold to somebody that didn't qualify. So the answer is, sure, that's a risk that any developer takes when they're developing a property, whether it's conventional or whether it's LMI, but here, what I can tell you is, there's no concern about us going back on what we present, because we're locked in, we're not just locked in with this board, we're locked in with the state, we're locked in to, with the monitoring agent, so there's more than one check on the fact that that would be done.
I know you're locked in, but is it feasible, my point about this whole thing is, all I would like to know.
We will show you with the pro formas how feasible it is, and.
Because for us to go further, to say, all right, we're gonna let you go further.
We're not asking for permission tonight, Charlie.
Let's stop you, let's be say, I want to see this, I don't want to go any further until I see this kind of information, take the papers and close them, until I get this information about how the comprehensive plan.
Let me just say this, what's gonna happen is, we're here to elicit feedback, there is no decision, there is no appeal, there is no determination, we're gonna come back here at preliminary, when your planner certifies that we have a complete project, we're gonna present it, there's 90 days from that date to determine whether you like this project or not. The reason why we're trying to get feedback now is, we don't want to hit you for the first time at preliminary with a 90 day schedule to make this decision, we're giving you a lot upfront, and we're gonna give you a lot of information as we go forward, we don't need to wait for every meeting to do that, you've got a very good planner that we're gonna communicate with and give him answers to your questions, as well as the staff, but to suggest right now that we need to give something, that you're gonna close the book, that's not the law, it's not how it's gonna happen, with all due respect, it's not gonna happen.
So today is informational for both sides.
That's it. We're failing you out, anything that you say tonight, we are gonna consider, no one is gonna say reject it, no, we're taking the feedback, we've got Madam Synographer taking it down, we're gonna go with the team, and we're gonna say, this is what we're willing to do, this is what we're willing to do, it's not about any dead ends tonight.
What I'm saying to you is, my, what I would like to see, for me to go any further with it, when it's this tight, the next time, I would like to see that information for me to make a decision.
It's required for you to make a decision, but tonight, we're not asking for a decision.
I'm not saying, I'm not asking you.
But it's required for you to make a decision.
I would like you to have, like the sidewalks, I'd like to have that information.
You guys are agreeing to provide that information?
Yes.
For what, we have to vote?
Yes. You're gonna have them before preliminary, and the other thing I'd comment, as it relates to market forces, we do have a real estate professional here that, quite frankly, can probably tell you what the market is up here much better than me, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Casali, but we've got somebody here for that. What we don't have is the concrete numbers, we're not gonna give you numbers that are fudge, we're gonna give you the ones that are concrete and accepted.
Mr. Rotella, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate what my fellow board member is concerned about, but the other part of it is this, this developer is going forward with a particular plan that he has sought, expertise from various people, Mr. Casali, the traffic person, the real estate person, we are not at the point where this board is being asked to move forward with this, they're looking for feedback, the information that we will get is probably all the information that Charlie is looking for at this point in time.
That's what I keep saying, I keep saying, that's all I want.
At this point, to me, it seems to be premature, those questions are good, but they're not, they're not for this meeting, this meeting is simply to say, look, let's go forward, and your request that you get the information before we go forward is very reasonable.
Let's move on, because it's agreed that that will be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Produced prior to any vote.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Casali, why he's here, before we move to the next witness or presenter?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is John Chevlin, from PAR Corporation, registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island, been doing transportation, traffic related work for about 34 years, have testified in front of most community boards within the state over the years. PAR was asked to perform a traffic impact analysis report, which we prepared and submitted dated November 2024. Part of this study, we went ahead, we're looking at three main things, or two main things, traffic safety and traffic capacity, so we determined what the project limits were going to be as far as our study, we looked at the Lime Rock Road corridor, and we took into account four intersections, Douglas Pike, Jankseel Road, then the two neighborhood streets, Crossway, Karen Anne Drive, and Clark Road, which will line up with the proposed side entrances. The first step of the study that we did was data collection phase, where we went out, did some field reviews, gathered a lot of information as far as roadway geometries, traffic patterns, alignments, obstructions in the roadways, took speeds and such, and we took that all into account as far as our study to use that as our basis for doing some of the analysis. We also collected existing traffic volume data, so we did peak hour accounts on a typical weekday, it was Tuesday, October 8th, so we had the morning peak hours from 7 to 9 that we gathered information for, and we looked at the afternoon peak hours from 4 to 6 PM that we gathered information for. Those were. Those were done at both the Douglas Pike Lime Rock Road intersection, also the Jankseal Road and Lime Rock Road intersection. And the other component that we gathered information from was from the Smithfield Police Department. We gathered crash data over the last three complete years from there for the study area. We wanted to gather that information to see if there's any areas where there could be some patterns of safety issues in regards to crashes, to see if there's some that needs to be mitigated to try to make anything with the project area safer. So, you know, go back in regards to talk about the safety analysis is what we did. So again, part of our field study, we went, we went out there, we took information, we gathered speed data in regards to the roadway and the vicinity of the site. We use that speed data in order to determine what the site distances that are required at the site driveways. The posted speed limit was thirty five miles per hour. We found at the eighty fifth percentile speed, which is what eighty, the eighty five percent of cars on the, at that are driving. So we use that as far as our, our speed in order to go ahead and determine whether it's safe or not. So with that eighty fifth, we use a fifty mile an hour design speed, which is fifteen miles over. We actually found the eighty fifth percentile speed to forty eight, but we bumped it up to fifty. Taking a look at the sight lines at the site, I know it's hard right now to go out there and, and be able to go ahead and see because it is overgrown that area, but we were able to go ahead and look at those areas and also looked at aerial maps. And with the alignment of Lime Rock Road, the location of driveways, we far exceed the, the sight lines that need be done in order to get safely in and out of the site. As far as the crash data goes, we found that over the three year period within the study area, there were forty three crashes. One of the things that we observed with the crashes is that a lot of the crashes, twenty one of the crashes were single car accidents that were either caused by hitting an animal, deer or some other animal that was out there, or they went ahead, they were trying to avoid animals out in that area. Or there was a few DUIs and there were several in regards of weather related where cars skittered off the road or lost control of the car. So the majority of the crashes, almost half the crashes, went ahead where a single car crashes. There's also thirteen rear end collisions that occurred at the signalized intersections, which are very commonly have a signalized intersections as cars stop and go when people paying attention or not paying attention. So those are usually minor rear end crashes that occurred. Of all the crashes that we had, four of the crashes indicated that there was some minor injuries to it, but we didn't see any crashes that had any major injuries or thank God, no fatalities as well. So we looked at that.
The, the basis of minor injuries for vehicles, what are you using to rely on that? Is it just purely the police report?
The police report.
It's really not helpful.
And the police report in regards to just, you know, somebody went because they're complaining that a neck, neck issue or whatever, you know?
A, a police report very rarely will be indicative of whether or not the claim for injury is going to be made. So the, the weight value of that is to me suspect, but go ahead.
Do it.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
I got a question on a crash too.
Chair?
I met at the TRC. I read your thing. One of the most honest guys I met so far on this board.
You said that, I, I'm still shocked.
I, I should have met me already, right?
Yes.
I do have one, one criticism. You said the twenty one is done by animals. Okay, I'll get it out. There's twenty four, so the other twenty three were done by head-ons. It says right in here.
No, not by head-ons. There was thirteen that were rear ends. I think there was a.
You got, you got, no, you got four, I'm sorry, four head-ons.
Four head-ons, right.
My problem is that it's Lime Rock and Douglas is where the other twelve, that's where the, where the twenty four of, of those accidents happened. What, what can be done to fix that? Is it going to, that's going to be a problem there. Everything I see on, on your whole thing here, the head-ons on Lime Rock, four, once too many. You got four.
Yeah, that, well, that was at the signalized intersection. So a lot of times the head-ons are obviously when the front end hits the front end. So there could be cars that are going and, and taking a left turn and meanwhile, somebody who should be, who should have waited and a car that's going straight has hit the head-on. So they're not crossing the center line of the road and going head-on. It's at the intersection that they are, as they're turning, they're hitting the front end to the front end. So it's almost like an angle, you know, an angle crash. But that, at that intersection, you know, twelve of those were rear end and seven of them were single, single vehicle crashes at that intersection.
It just, it just seems to me what, everything that you saw, well, that seems to me, seems like the most problematic area that I can see over there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the studies are out there saying a lot of the time that some of these crashes that are occurring, a lot of them are related back to driver behavior. You look at studies now, they say a lot of the crashes that are occurring, either people who are, you know, cell phones or whether they're just, you know, playing on their radio or whatever, but it's.
There's no suggestion that you can make.
It, it's hard at a signalized intersection for somebody who's going ahead and not, you know, obeying the laws of the, of the turning movements and going and cutting in front of cars and, you know, it's, that really goes back to the driver on a lot of those types of accidents.
How much more traffic do you think will be created in that, that one intersection right there with this project?
Yeah, and I, I was going to get to that as far as the capacity analysis and what we did.
Like I said.
I, I interrupted you, so go.
Oh, no, 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 that's good, that's good.
Well, you wanted to crash things, that's why I was, that was what I was saying, yeah.
Interrupt me anytime you want, just make sure you think I'm honest, that's all I ask.
Charlie said that.
No, I, I know, I read it. You did a pretty good job. I mean, a lot of them, I read a lot of bullshit, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's really the summary of the safety, like I said, we didn't really see any area where, you know, there's a, a traffic, a crash pattern that needs to be addressed as far as, and we could do as far as geometries, single timing, you know, signage or anything else, just based on what we saw from the crashes. Like I said, we feel with the site, the way the site's laid out, the way the roadway of Lime Rock is, safe, safe sight lines will be available in order to safely be able to pull in and out of the site.
How about the volume of traffic anticipated from this development, given the size, given the potential amount of vehicles for each dwelling? Seems like a very significant amount.
I'm going next.
Okay.
So I'll go onto the traffic now. So when we did the, the traffic analysis, there's three conditions that we look at. We look at the existing conditions, which are what the traffic volumes are now. Then we project projects out five years. We look at a future no build condition and that's what is going to be happening out here without this development being built. So you look at it in regards to what's going to be like without this development in place. So in order to determine what the future volumes are, we go ahead and we put a growth factor on there based on typically U S census data, like how much grows in that area. The town has grown at point three eight percent over the last ten years per year, annual. We, we applied a half percent annual to throw that out there for future growth. We also coordinated with the town planner as far as other developments in the area. He did go ahead and, and made note of two developments. One was at four thirty five and four forty five Douglas Pike, which was a thirty four unit residential development. And then there's also at one seventy Whipple Road, a fourteen unit residential development. We took a look at those, those are not big trip generators, those size developments. And based on the discussion I have with the plan, I think he'll, he'll agree that the growth factor that we're, we're including into the study will include volumes from that. So we, we went ahead and those are all considered part of the future growth. So once we go ahead and we have the future growth numbers, we go ahead and we look at the future builds and the future build conditions is the traffic that's to be added on the future no build for this development. So in order to determine how many trips will be generated from this site, there's a, a manual that's put out by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And this manual goes, it's used by planners, traffic engineers, architects to determine particular types of land uses. It's a book that's compiled of a wide range of land uses that could be done. So for this residential type of development, they have a land use code for single family attached housing development. And based on that manual, the number of trips that will be generated from a site like this will be during the morning peak hour, a hundred and six trips.
How many?
Hundred and six. And that's broken down with twenty seven entering, seventy nine exiting. And then in the afternoon peak hour, based on the site's development, there's a hundred and twenty five trips that could be generated during the peak hour. And that's seventy four entering and fifty one exiting based on the studies and the data they gathered. And a lot of people, when you go in front, they sit there and they say, well, every house has two cars and you're, you're going to generate. But we're looking at is the worst hour of the day, the peak hours in the morning and the afternoon. So those trips aren't all coming in and out during the morning and afternoon, morning and afternoon peak hours. I mean, you have some of them, and those are the volumes that they see during that peak hour.
Yeah, you got seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock workers.
Yeah, you know, it's seven thirty, eight thirty, you know, it varies throughout. That's why.
I said, I did the math, I did the math on your little thing, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we, we put those out there, then we run, we have a software program where you can run the capacity analysis. And during the AM peak hour, you know, all the intersections, none of the level of services change. The worst level of service is level service C, which is very acceptable. Even the turning moments and the approach moments for, for every intersection, none of them have, have had a reduction in level of service and the amount of delay is not that significant. And the afternoon peak hour, same thing, you know, worst case level service B at the intersections. As far as any approaches, the worst level of service is level service C at any, any of the approaches. I did misspeak at the TRC meeting. I think I, I mentioned in that meeting when I was asked that I thought that one of the approaches reduced from level of service C to level of service D. And after I looked at it afterwards, none of them do go ahead and reduce down to level service, service D. So I know that was one of the comments that was in the TRC notes in regards to taking a look to see if you can mitigate to get it back down to level of service C. But like I said, none of them, none of them had reduced. It's just the amount of delay that you weigh at the intersection. You got to remember too, with the, the trips that you had generated between the two driveways, we look at traffic patterns on a Lime Rock, Lime Rock Road, based on those percentages. So we distribute them that way. Then when you approach the intersections, you distribute them then in regards to the, the percentages that are taking a right turn through or left. So they get distributed in there. That's how you go ahead and determine, determine what the volumes are and how they're determined, distributed within the traffic stream. So that's, you know, the summary of what we did, like I said, the crash data review didn't show any significant patterns. Sight lines are good. Capacity analysis didn't show any reduction in level of service for any approaches or the overall intersections. And based on my professional opinion, you know, I think this project will have no significant impacts to the traffic capacity or safety in the area.
Any questions of the board members?
You mentioned that there's some, some chart, some book that basically gives you how many. Is that based, and I understand it's based on a single family, but is it based on two bedrooms, three bedrooms, four bedrooms?
It's not, it's just single families. So they have a, they have a mix in there in regards to where they got the information from, but they don't break it down per the number of bedrooms. I think it, I'm not sure why they did that, but I, I think it's, I was thinking it's because, you know, sometimes you have four bedrooms and, you know, you have two that are used because you have one, then you have a family room or TV or like they, so it's hard to go ahead and say, well, it's all going to be occupied by X amount of people in the, in the house. So I think they look at houses in general, you know, they may have bigger houses, they could have smaller houses as far as come with those numbers.
And my, my concern would be is that, you know, you've got two hundred and eighteen units. Four bedrooms, that could be three kids per unit. That's over six hundred and fifty kids that are going to school somewhere. I know in this town, a lot of kids don't take the bus, there's a lot of drop offs. So your number seems a little shy to me based on, again, the number of children that are going to be in that development.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, that comes to play too, I think in regards to when you look at the numbers, because depending on what time the schools start, like you see where the high schools start at seven o'clock, you know, say the peak hour is seventh, you know, seven thirty to eight thirty.
But they're all going to be in that peak. They're all going to be in that peak timeframe, right?
High school maybe before that peak timeframe. Some elementary school, the middle school, like, you know, they could be coming, you know, after. I think some of the elementary schools started at nine o'clock, so, you know, they are buried in there, but.
Any other questions?
Also, like, you'll be able to get out of there faster. I looked at it also, so you, that's going to move fast out of there because that's not, you know, it's not like you're on Pleasant View, you know what I mean? It's bumping to bumper, the traffic's going to back up into that because they're going to come out of there. It's two ninety fives right there, you know? It's a good place to develop.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, that's one of the questions that came up with the TRC, I think it was asked in regards to how much is the traffic going to back up, is going to be backing up in front of the first house or so, but it does not show a significant queue coming out of the driveways. Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, they won't back up beyond that, you know, maybe they have two cars, you know, stacked around once, but.
So I think I asked if we could just move one of the, one of the things back one space.
Yeah, but the, the analysis doesn't indicate that it's going to back up in, you know, in front of that house.
Yeah, no, it's close, but.
Yeah. But I'll be here if there's any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as far as a further presentation this evening, to the extent that the board members have any questions for our, our real estate professional, he could certainly take some questions. There is a letter in your packet. I know that the school age children item just came up. Mr. Lombardo has addressed that with some data. We don't have the benefit of Mr. Lombardo tonight, so I, I would invite the board to review his report, filter any questions that you have through your planner, and I'd be happy to get you formal responses.
I'm sorry, do, do we have that report?
I understand it will deliver it today.
Okay. Because I, I don't.
That's right, that, that's correct. The great deal of, of materials that you have, I believe, didn't meet the, the deadline. There were some other items that during TRC, during our conversations with your planner, so it would be really nice to get some of those materials in. So we did, we did our best at, at a pre-app to get you them. Again, there is a report from Mr. Lombardo, there is a report from the real estate professional. I understand that you haven't had the benefit to review them, but I'd be very happy to direct any questions that you have and get a, a letter that, that supplements them. The other thing I would note, particularly from Mr. Lombardo's analysis, is it is preliminary. We do plan on supplementing it with some more information. I, I don't think it's a, I don't want to get into a back and forth because I'd like to give Mr. Lombardo that opportunity. One thing I did discuss with him in potentially building in, into his report is the infusion into the local economy. And that's one, one aspect that, that, that has not been dealt with in his report, but when we're talking about property taxes, when we're talking about one-time payments and we're trying to demonstrate the, the fiscal impact of this development, I think it's important to see what it could add to the community.
And I would like to see what it does to the school system.
Certainly.
I mean, you know.
The, the population density of this potential project is.
Substantial.
And it's concerning.
Yeah.
Understood. And, and again, there is some, there's hard data that has been provided and I think everybody should have the chance to review it. I apologize that it wasn't till yesterday morning, but I think we'll have more than enough time before the preliminary to bolster that and to answer any questions you may have.
The, the initial plan that Mr. Casali had, the non-con, meets the town comprehensive plan, in my opinion, much more so than this project.
The, the issue that I would say is this, we're looking for minimal waivers. I mean, the only waiver that I'm, that I know of at this time is for road width. Your ordinance has it at thirty, we're looking for it to be twenty four, twenty two. We are twenty one units under the minimum. So what we're hearing the density and we're certainly going to discuss it with our client, we understand the concerns, I, I do have to say, we didn't go for everything that we could have. We left twenty one units off the table. And we understand that there's going to be concerns about the impact on the school system. That's why in a pre-app context, I think to get you a report at this juncture is the best that we can do to start that discussion.
So, and like I had mentioned, you got 650 children with a four-bedroom. Uh, I, I don't know where they're playing, I don't know where the recreation area is. I mean, you, you basically just took the plan and loaded up the residences and didn't give any kind of, um, uh, planning of what that number of children are going to do in this development. So I would say that if someone could take a look at recreation of, of, of what this number of children in this development are gonna do on a, after school on a daily basis, I mean, I think it would, again, given the size of this development. And I understand what you said, it's, you know, you're asking for feedback and saying that you didn't load it up by 20 is a little, you know.
No, I.
Looking the wrong way, I'm saying, I'm looking out for the, for the benefit of the, the people who are actually in that development to try to get as much money as you can get by showing them amenities that are due to the people here. So I would, my comment would be that, um, you may wanna take a look at recreational, um, development as long, in addition to maxing out the number of residences.
Absolutely, and we were certainly gonna, we will consider a recreational area that's already been discussed. I, I would submit, we think that we could do something like that, that would be beneficial with the density that we've proposed, but that's something that's already been discussed. It was raised by your planner as an item of, of concern, and we're already taking, uh, taking a look at that. Absolutely.
What was the idea behind four-bedroom units as opposed to say two or three, other than just maxing out?
Well, I, I will say, and then I'll, I'll take a look at my team, I, I think that the question is really marketability and, and what is attractive in this market right now. I mean, ultimately, it's market forces that are gonna decide if, um, you know, something, the price, whether something's rented, whether they actually build the lots, whether they sell the lots, um, you know, my.
Well, just as an example, you know, a lot of homes would be either two or three-bedroom homes. Some of the larger homes go to four, and here we're dealing with four for a very high density. And I was just wondering what, what the thought process was.
Yeah, I think the process was, we, we felt that the market was looking for those types of houses up here, um, but I can say this, I mean, we're listening to that feedback. If there, if there's an appetite of this board to see, um, some variety in that, and potentially some two, some three, some four, uh, like I said this evening, that there's, nobody is creating any dead ends tonight, we're taking the commentary, we'll go back and we'll talk with the team, and they're professionals, to see whether they think the market, uh, you know, could benefit that kind of variety. Anything that you wanted to add, Joe?
I think that's, that's weird, what the community wants. Um, if there's a shortage on housing and housing stock, there should be a, you know, a litany of one, two, three, and upwards of four-bedroom units.
Yeah, I think making them all four, I, I mean, I think this is the first, the one that I've, I've been on the board for about 11 or 12 years now. Uh, I think this is the first type of development that a four-bedroom's have come before us, which is, you know.
E- even the threes, right, Richard? That you, you didn't, you didn't propose these if they weren't just one and two-bedroom because of school age children, but then you say that's what's needed, families need. So if, but it's gonna be as the market bears, but we'll drill down further with, with staff in terms of what the community needs, and that's what the applicant will want.
Yeah, certainly we'll get the bedroom count, absolutely.
Was the four-bedroom still. Banking mortgages, it's easier to get a mortgage with a four, four-bedroom, cause it's more valuable. Is there, was there, I'm just, like, he just brought up a good point about why, I mean, he, why, I'm thinking to myself, why? Is there a banking reason for it? Because a lot of people, maybe three bedrooms, four bedrooms, that's a lot of kids to have these days, you know what I mean? You gotta have, I mean, low to moderate income, if you're, if you're poor and you've got four kids, you, I can't say how you're poor.
And I, I had noted that we've done this.
You know what I'm saying? How are you gonna be low-income and have four kids?
I try to stay in my lane, and if I don't have any kids, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to this guy.
No, he just, I, I didn't even think, I didn't even think, to be honest with you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Wright Lee White, for the record, real estate broker with Keller Williams Realty. I'm open to any questions you may have, I think you said, uh, marketability, as far as financing goes.
Yeah, is there, is that a reason for it?
I mean, bedroom, bedroom count plays a factor in value of homes necessarily, I don't think, uh, you know, the banks, you know, you'll have your bank appraisal correct, but, um, no, I don't think it has to do with financing, with marketability overall.
In other words, a banker, if I was gonna buy a house and, and if the square footage was the same, the mortgage would be the same.
There, there are many things that constitute value.
Yeah, the four-bedroom would be more, would be more valuable, I think, even though the space is the same, that you've got.
It's expensive.
Yeah, so, so I'm saying.
Yes and no, right? Value is not just driven by bedroom count, it's driven by total square footage and then usability of each of those rooms. But I think it's more so from a marketability standpoint, is why the four-bedrooms were presented.
Is it taxed differently? Is it taxed on square footage or bedrooms?
Square footage, yes.
Square footage.
Square footage.
Yeah, I'm just trying, he brought up a good point, why four, you know, fours, I think you're gonna have a hard time, I mean, how many four-bedrooms actually building? Maybe it's not that many. How many are building?
They're all.
They're all four? All four?
Yes, that's why.
As, as presented at this.
That's why I brought the, the issue up.
I'm sorry, yeah, well, it does, that's a very, you know, I skipped, I was looking at anything else but that, to be honest with you. They're all four?
Mr. Chairman.
Joe, Mr. Rotella?
Um, one question, you're, you're presenting this plan to us, it's a, it's preliminary at this point in time, is there, and, uh, given the fact that board members have raised the issue of whether or not, uh, you know, with low income, you're probably gonna have a lot of, uh, some children, a lot of children involved in going here, has anybody taken the opportunity to present something to the school committee to make them aware of the fact that, uh, the, this plan is going into place? Because right down the road, okay, there's an elementary school, I'm being, it's Le Perch, and I mean, that's probably gonna be the, uh, the place where most of these elementary kids will end up going, um, because of the, because of the location of that school. You know, if they're older, they're probably gonna end up at the middle school and the high school on Pleasant View. But, uh, my question is, has anybody thought to consider, um, making the school department aware of the fact that, you know, there could be an influx of children, or is it preliminary at this point in time and too early?
It's preliminary at this time, we haven't had any direct communication, uh, with, um, that body. I think that certainly, this is gonna be a public hearing as we go forward, this is a public hearing, the preliminary will be a public hearing. I have no issue, uh, with personally letting them know we'll be on here for hearing, I have no problem providing them with the application, I have no problem answering questions, but it's not something that's been done yet, but, um, I think that that's an interesting point, be happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
I had been superintendent this week, and working on the speed of this development, so they're aware of it.
Other than being aware?
Um, they know, they know of it, we reviewed it, um, she said, well, the first school is pretty much at capacity, so, well, we better make sure.
Okay.
So you know, something that's gonna have to be addressed?
Something that will need to be addressed, uh, however, let's, let's give Mr. Lombardo an opportunity, let's, have you guys read the report, please? Any questions? Again, I'm happy to get you a formal written response from Mr. Lombardo, um, and obviously, uh, me and your planner and Mr. Lombardo can have a discussion, I can organize those calls. It's just not appropriate for me to engage in something that's outside my, my discipline. So I wanna bring him.
I guess what we're saying is that you're, you're asking for feedback, but we really can't give you feedback on something that is probably one of the more important things.
You can give me all the feedback you want, all night, that's why I have her.
No, 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 what I'm saying is that.
I can't give you a meaningful response, because I'm not a professional in that capacity.
And I haven't read the report, that's what I'm saying, is that I, so I can't give you feedback on that report, so.
I mean, you know, one of the things the reports obviously say is that there are, there are school age multiples, like, that's, it's not gonna be one, you know, two, three, that's, that's given. It'd be what they say for, you know, two, three-bedroom units, you get, for this kind of unit, you know, one, two children per.
For a three-bedroom?
Yeah.
Or four?
That's why a four-bedroom, you know, is.
Four, I can see your argument, four, you're gonna have a mom.
What I'm saying is you can't equate your bedroom, you can't, you're not a one-to-one equation for bedroom to children, that, that just doesn't, it doesn't work.
Well, four, you're definitely gonna have, you're definitely gonna have two children.
Well, that's, that's, that's not a given.
Or you're gonna have, you're gonna have.
You're certainly gonna have more kids.
Two offices, mom and dad, well, mom's gonna have an office on the first floor, dad's gonna have an office on the second floor.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the multiplier?
There, there are various, I was looking at some just recently, and you've got numbers varying, I think they're a very in-depth study of this at school based on the 2000 census data, but, uh, they range from, you know, point one, point two, uh, children per, you know, per unit for these kinds.
Point two per unit?
Yeah, point two, point one to point two.
This seems low.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, it's, it's based, and there are, there are nationwide firms that do these multipliers, looking, you know, countrywide at, at units like this. Things have changed though, since, you know, we've got housing, like, you know, a lot more people looking for, you know, these, you know, desirable school system, and, you know, you're out to see a good number of children, there's no question about it. Speaking to the value of it, I mean, just from Rhode Island Housing looking at, and they, they accept the value, they look at bedrooms, so it's, serve them out for a two-bedroom, and, and I've only seen two, three, I haven't really seen a, a price of four bedrooms, I don't know how much acreage we need for, they get.
That's right, I have a question for you about that. Besides this project, I know you're gonna make money, right? That's what you're now, it's all about, you're gonna build one or two, millions of dollars. Millions of dollars you're investing, but can you make the same kind of money back when putting three instead of four? What is that difference?
That's not a question for him, that's a question for me, it's totally irrelevant to this proceeding. We're here to do a good development that gives this town 50% LMI stock, and you need it. The numbers, what they're gonna make, it's got nothing to do with it. The only numbers that matter is what RI Housing tells us we're gonna sell the LMI for. At this point, I, I don't wanna talk about what they're, what they're gonna be sold for, it's totally irrelevant to why we're here.
But today's informational, is it not?
It is, but it's still, it's not.
In all fairness.
My question to him, when, when someone was like that, is the, it was a marketing question, it wasn't something like that, is it feasible as in a market, not so much from this thing here, is it real to develop? Is it that much of a difference between a four and a three? Is it, is it that much more people out there that want a four than a three?
I'm unaware of the price difference in that Rhode Island Housing is going to set, to be honest with you, I don't think anyone at this point knows.
That's another question, that's another question, about what people want, we're talking about what we want, you're saying what, what people want, people want four bedrooms.
People want space, and unfortunately, in this town, to get a new construction, single family, you know, they're gonna be spending in the high seven, eight, hundred, nine-hundred thousand dollars, and that's not what this project is supposed to be. So to give people space at an affordable rate, I think that's what this project is proposing.
Yeah, I understand, I was just saying, four, I'm just, it's gonna be a problem, I, like I said, I'm looking at it now, like, he brought up the school department, four, a lot of kids.
Our, our target demographic is, is not families. Once again, I don't believe you have my report, in the report, it does have our target demographic. Our target demographic is a young professional, uh, whether it's a Bryant grad, FGX, Amica, Fidelity employee, young professionals anywhere from the twenties to forties, and that is our target demographic, and I do have.
Is that a little bit, how is that a little bit?
A four-bedroom? A four-bedroom, are you looking at a professional?
Yes, we are.
Wow. Seems inconsistent.
A young professional or a young couple, you have two people right there. It's, it's condo-style living, it's not single-family housing living, it's condo-style living, which is what the younger demographic is looking for. And if you have two people, most of them, most of them aren't working from home, so whether they're having a guest room and then two offices, it is feasible.
You're gonna need a lot more parking, because there're gonna be a lot more professionals in each, it's a lot, be a lot more drivers in each, um, unit, if that's what you're thinking.
But I, I think Mr. Shavelin said he took very conservative numbers, let me just, I hate to delve into Mr. Lombardo's report too much.
We don't have it, right?
Let, let's say a school costs about 10 million. The property tax revenues from this development are proposed to be 1.5 million on an annual basis. The impact fee, one time, a little bit over, around 610, 610K. Water connection fees at 348, building permits at just over 1 million, just over 1.1. So you're looking at in the first year, over $2 million in revenue to the town, you're looking at it on an annual basis, 1.5. We can look at all the data we want, but we can't speculate, we don't know exactly who's gonna buy these houses, we don't know whether they're gonna have kids or not, they could have eight kids, they could have one kid, they could have no kids. At the end of the day, candidly, it's not a basis to deny this project that there may be some more infrastructure in this town for school-age children, and that's part of these numbers, and we're here to do a weighing analysis, and the question is whether or not, the waivers that we're requesting, which include density and one road width waiver, whether they outweigh, I'm sorry, whether they support your need for low and moderate housing. And the reality is, is if the town was in a better position right now with LMI, if it had happened in more small incremental developments, we wouldn't be here, and there wouldn't be a permit process. There's not one in Providence, there's not one in East Providence, there is one here. So you need the housing. Um, and again, we'll get you more information from Mr. Lombardo, we obviously understand that this is a major issue, and we're gonna study it at length, but the concept that this project is gonna rise and fall on the amount of children that may or may not occupy these homes, it's not the case, it's not founded in the law. So we're here to work with you, and we're gonna bring these considerations back, but it's not a, a make or break for this project. People have children, they have the right to have children.
Not arguing, so, I mean, he just brought up who's gonna live here, not, not us, he did, he said they're gonna be, so that's why we just got into that conversation, he did that, not us. My question to you is, how mu, you're saying we're in trouble with the LMIs, how much are we in trouble on the whole city?
I vote 5.5.
All right, so.
You got a lot to go.
So how many are you gonna give us to get back up to 10?
We're gonna give you a lot, we're gonna give you 109.
How much does it add, but by bringing more housing in, does it add, does that lower the number too?
That's the point, if we did 25%, you weren't really gonna get much, but when we do 109, you get quite a net benefit.
What is the net benefit then?
You'll have to give me a moment to look at the.
I'm just saying, you brought it up, and so, I didn't even think of it till you brought it up. I mean, if we, we're getting that much of a benefit, then sure. But the argument on, on, and the income of school, you couldn't build this, you couldn't, it would take their income coming from there, about 20 years to build a school, average school right now, you're looking at around a hundred million dollars to build.
Uh, that's a little bit high.
Well, depends on bright and private, who you're gonna, in the domain, gonna go and say, listen, we're gonna put it, see your housing thing over here, your property, it's ours, it's the property around here, as you know, by buying, it's pretty valuable around here.
I'm not gonna navigate this report right now, what I'll tell you is I'll get you that number of exactly what your net increase will be.
Thank you.
But that's the point of the 50%, because that is the problem with the threshold, that's the problem with the 25%, particular these numbers, that, that, the, the, the applicant gets quite a density bonus, but you don't see statistically the realization of materially moving your number. You get that on a 50%, we don't need to do the math, you know that, I know that.
Yeah, I'd just like to see what, what the benefits are, that's all.
And we'll get that too.
Thank you, that's all.
Any other questions of the board members?
Just one other comment, Mr. Chairman, and this has been Mr. Cal Cagney's practice in other developments in this town. He does a lot of outreach, he meets with the community, he meets with the neighbors, he meets with people that have raised issues with the project. I, I'd like to offer Mr. Cal Cagney, very briefly, just like to give, let you gentlemen know who he's spoken to and what the feedback has been at this time, and I would note, you'll see that it, it's not a crowded room tonight, and part of that is because of Mr. Cal Cagney's efforts in reaching out to the community so that they know about this project and understand what it means and where we're going.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as part of this process and other developments, we typically reach out to the neighbors and abutters, uh, a good example of this is West River Estates located at, uh, 15 Whipple Road in Smithfield, um, had several meetings with head of the association, Sharon Ritchie of Pheasant Run, met at the library, went through the plan, you know, prior to submitting it, and then also during the process to understand their concerns, or visual barriers and different things. things. Recently, I reached out to and spoken to the president of the residents of Lime Rock, David Martinelli, and also Joyce Stevens of Orchard Meadows. I'd said the feedback was positive. They were happy through the communication. They both have my phone number and email. Reach out to me anytime. So feedback was good to have the communication open. They talked about visual barriers, you know, they're going to be able to see the neighborhood, you know, what's the distance from the road, you know, something that you brought up. So we take a lot of pride in the design and, you know, the aesthetics, how it fits into the neighborhood. So I think that was very positive.
There's, there's one person who owns a lot of property on that.
Louis Cal Cagney?
There's one person who owns a lot of property. Forget it. He owns Blackbird Farms over there. Does he own the side of Lime Rock?
Harris family?
Yeah. Has he, how's he feel about all?
I can ask him. I can.
Because I, 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 I know him fairly well. I didn't, I don't, so.
If you want to share his phone number, I can call him tomorrow.
No, I'm just saying, I go buy, buy my Christmas tree. I mean, I know him fairly well.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a process that we've done, you know.
I know his property. Yeah, I know his family.
Yeah, this is a process we've done around Smithfield and other areas.
I know, I've been, I lived in this town all my life, at least 65 years, you know.
Yeah, so I think it's always good to kind of reach out before they get the letter and, you know, they're kind of confused with what they see. Maybe they can't understand the plan and just kind of, you know, put a name with the face. And, you know, just kind of.
I know, I think he's one of the more logical man owners over there.
Yeah. And I can definitely reach out to him. I'm going to talk to the airport, you know, the, the temple next door, you know, so.
No, he's a reasonable guy, but I'm sorry, was he notified? Is that, was that in that area? Have they been notified?
There's no, there's no.
That's not yet.
Notification for a pre-app, I believe, is just 48 hour RIS ones. We will, for preliminary, but, but apropos to his comment, we're going to have a commu, we will have community meetings and meetings with groups like this and neighbors leading up to the, the next time we're here. That's part of our process. We'd rather understand the issues and try to address them without it being in a, in a public hearing.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, I just, I know.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we have no, nothing further. Does any other questions? Otherwise, I would just renew what I said, that any, any questions, any additional information, be happy to respond very quickly, formally, in writing. Get you guys some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving to planning board 2025 meeting schedule. I think we all have a copy.
We have a, can I have a minute here?
Oh.
I want to have a comment on this project. Michael Ionati, Smithfield Town Council. I just wanted to make sure the board's aware that on the opposite side of the street of Lime Rock Road, the Clock Road area, the Karen Anne Drive area, we've had some serious flooding issues that the town council has had to deal with by allocating funds to do studies. So just to make everyone aware of that. I don't know if this project affects it or not, but, you know, you must be aware of it, Mike.
This is a different board schedule. This area.
Yeah, I hope so.
Doesn't include you too, that, that flood. It's, it's going to be flowing under Lime Rock Road, just east of those five, you know, that, that, I think it's looked at. I'm not aware of any issues in this area or issues in that area that we're concerned about.
Well, we have a report, a report coming out very soon on mitigation of the flooding for all this area. So, you know, I, I expect it's going to cost millions of dollars to mitigate. So I'm just, you know, hopefully, hopefully there is no effect.
Thank you. Turning to the board schedule for 2025, a copy was provided to everyone. Should we have a second? All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? The ayes have it. Finally, turning to public comment. If anyone from the public would like to come forward to make a comment, please feel free to do so. Not having anybody come forward, public comment is closed. Does anybody have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? The ayes have it.